Thank you for attending tonight's regular city council meeting. For the record, it's March 6th, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I'll begin with the roll call. So council, when I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton?
Here.
Councilmember Stroup?
Here.
Roden?
Here.
Ruben?
Here.
Alvera? And Laura Kerner?
Here.
And Scott Parker?
Here.
With six members of council present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Christina. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. A reminder to everyone that is here tonight that our meeting is our live broadcast. And if you get an opportunity to speak as part of the meeting, I'd ask that you use the podium that is up here. And the reason for that is the individuals that are attending as part of the live broadcast cannot hear the comments unless they're spoken from the podium. But I'd like to welcome everybody that's here tonight in attendance at the meeting. We have a pretty good turnout for tonight's meeting. And I'd like to welcome anybody that's here as part of the live broadcast. For those that are here tonight, if you do get an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that you introduce yourself and then state whether you're a Fair Oaks Ranch resident or not, and if from an agency, please state which agency that you are from. And with that, we'll move on to our citizens to be heard. And just a reminder to all as related to citizens to be heard that council may not discuss or take any action on any item which has not been posted on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And also, I ask that any speakers that speak tonight as part of citizens to be heard, if you please limit your comments to five minutes. And we do have five individuals that did sign up. And first is Eric Bilstein, Mr. Bilstein.
My name is Eric Bilstein. I am a resident of Fair Oaks. I have two quick items. One is I'm suggesting in your consent agenda, I believe number eight, which is the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, that specifically under the Rules of Order under agendas, item 8.4, that you look at that, pull it from consent and discuss. It was suggested the words prior were, "No request or application shall be considered beyond the next regular meeting." And the new suggestion was, "Once an item has been heard and finally acted upon by the committee, it cannot be reheard for a period of 365 days from the day the committee heard the item unless new pertinent safety information is provided either by the requister, who initially brought the issue forward, or by staff." And I think that's standard language from probably the P and Z. And it makes sense if it is like a planning item that there is a parcel you're talking about. But when you're talking traffic safety, it may be a sidewalk, a speed limit, and to limit it to the original requister. So I would suggest something like, if something's been heard, a similar considerations would be based on merit as determined by staff and the committee chair. Just allow the ability that it could be on the fly. It doesn't have to be the original person because as is, where a lot is one applicant, a speed limit sign is that neighborhood or a crosswalk or a line of sight issue, so to change that. So just suggesting that that's pulled from there. The second is kind of a follow-up. I've spoken to you before about the Noble Arc and Dietz Elkhorn issue as far as traffic. And in full disclosure, there was some discussion at the last Traffic Safety Committee. It got a bit convoluted in that this issue predates that committee and there were issues of having redistricting. This was something in discussion that came up. Redistricting of Van Robb, widening the street, traffic safety officer. And I would hope that we can bring it back to you to put an agenda item of kind of the next escalated thing, which is to potentially look at a restricted turn lane during, or turn signs during peak times for a trial period and see if that works. I don't think anybody disagrees that there's really more traffic than was ever anticipated. So again, it's not, I understand you can't act on that. Just suggesting that if you could add that to an agenda item, I think it's appropriate of the next step based on what you guys have done over the last year. You've done the speed limit signs, the stop sign, all of that as test times. And I just suggest that you do one more test, which is the restricted turn, and see if that helps. And if it does help, then maybe you consider it permanent. But at least for now, just do a test period. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric. Next, we had Sherri St. Clair, Ms. St. Clair.
Get this down a little bit lower. Thank you for listening to me today. My name is Sherri St. Clair. I live in Fair Oaks Ranch, have been here since 2018, I believe. I'm a longtime resident of this area, grew up here. So I kind of feel like I've been here a lot longer than that. I'm going to get right to the point here. I think the mayor knows why I'm here. If you see social media, as a lot of you do, I am continuing to speak out about the need for a vote for this proposed civic center. I don't believe the majority of people in this community want this in its current form right now. There could be another way, there may be some other ideas. But I feel like right now, this is really getting pushed down people's throats and we've had virtually no say. We, I know I'm one of a number of people who have emailed, people on the council, the mayor, have received one response from the mayor and I appreciate that very much. And I, I say that with the understanding you all are busy and I appreciate all you do here and I know that it's not always easy to respond. We've taken a social media poll about as unscientific as you can get, but it was about 95% of the people involved said they would like to see this go to a vote. It's unclear who's going to pay for so many aspects of this proposed center. And when you have that level of unclearness with your community, I think that needs to be the first thing you should be looking at. There are issues with bringing people into the community. What's it going to be used for? How much is it going to cost us over the long run to run this thing? Security, maintenance, traffic, and parking. So I would ask that you please, please consider letting the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch have a vote on this proposed civic center before you go any further. I appreciate it. And again, I appreciate the time all of you put into the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for being here tonight and providing your comments. And last, Carol Willoughby, Ms. Willoughby.
I'm Carol Willoughby. I do live in Fair Oaks Ranch since 1998. I've met with every one of you and I know I'm a familiar face and you know why I'm here. But I had an opportunity to talk with the country club and see what they're doing. I know that they host quite a bit, especially parties and evenings and get togethers and organization things that people are having dinners and lunches for. But they're no longer going to be doing that to the, to the point of 200 people. They're only going to, from what, they told me they're only going to have 50 to 60 people and that's it. They are busy every weekend. Yes, they have the food there and yes, they do have alcohol. However, people can cater in this community center. It's going to be a busy place because there's nothing really available in the vicinity. There are some other locations available and I've visited with most of you about that that I just wish you'd look at. It's already there. Number one, the Fair family owns an event center, which is not being used. And I know it's tied up into some egress and ingress, but that's an option. Why aren't we looking at that? It's a, there's a lot of room around it for parking. The second one I was thinking of was Siblo Church has some land across Ralph Fair. I don't know much about that, but it's an option to just ask questions. Just think outside of the box. Do we have to have, with all the traffic and all the parking, do we have to have it here on campus? I know it's convenient, but there's no other place to build any annex. There's no room in that city hall in order to have one more little bitty desk even. It's packed to the gills. So as we continue to grow as a city, and we will, we're going to need more space. Let's think about outside of this campus. But I just wanted to come by and thank you for what you've done. Thank you for your patience with meeting with me, always make the time. And think about it. Think about just options. Let's think outside of the box. I do know, after calling a realtor about some land that's very close to here, that it's five acres and the price has dropped significantly. The people are ready to sell. So that could be an option. MDD can buy land. We don't need to rush building the building. We can buy the land and then wait and then build it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willoughby. And also thank you for your comments and thank you for being here tonight. Those were the only three individuals that had an opportunity to sign up for citizens to be heard. Are there any other people here that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? Okay. And then we'll move on with our presentations tonight. And the first presentation tonight, we had the honor of swearing in a new council member. And if I could ask Swarick family to come up. I believe I've met your wife, Kristin. Yeah, Greg. And then who else?
Yeah, Grace and Jonathan Duke.
All right. Are you all ready? Let's go over here. Who are we swearing in? You or Dad? You know, it's always great that we have a city really that was developed off of volunteers and that we continue to find volunteers that want to help to support the city operations. And Jonathan has done that. And so we welcome him here tonight and we're going to swear him in to take his seat on the city council. So are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. If you turn and face me and raise your right hand. I, Jonathan Swarick.
I, Jonathan Swarick.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of council member, Pl. 6.
Council member, Pl. 6.
Of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch.
City of Fair Oaks Ranch.
And will, to the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And congratulations. Oh, did you get a picture? And your official name tag? And then we have a place for you on the dais. Are you all excited? Are you all going to stick around? No, no, no. Got a full table again. And next alternative, is it Joanna? Are you going to do the couple of five-year service awards?
Yes, sir. All right. So thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Joanna Merrill. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Communications here at the city. And it is my pleasure tonight to stand before you and recognize two people who have met their five-year service awards. And we are going to start with the first one, Ms. Jennifer Hudson, if you will come join me up here. So Jennifer actually joined our team back in February of 2020 as our HR and communications specialist. She brought with her a very strong background in human resources and an even stronger background in wealth of knowledge with a master's degree in, in the communications field. So her expertise throughout the years has played a crucial role in laying the foundation for us for growing our communications department and strengthening our strategies and really just enhancing the ways that we engage with our residents here in Fair Oaks Ranch. In 2023, as our communications efforts expanded, Jennifer was promoted to a generalist, allowing our team to better meet the needs of both the human resources side of our department and the communications side. Just further demonstrating her commitment to professional growth, she also obtained her certified HR professional license that year as well. And this achievement just kind of speaks to her dedication and growth in the field of her career. Throughout her time with the city, she has continually demonstrated resilience and adaptability and really just an unwavering commitment to some of the service challenges and really exemplifying the qualities that we have come to expect of our employees here at Fair Oaks. So just to give an example, just a few weeks of Jennifer joining our team. Again, she joined in February 2020. And if you remember, in March of 2020 was when COVID hit. So she really, you know, was on her feet, being extremely flexible in rapidly changing environment when we were navigating the world of COVID from the HR perspective and then also through our communications efforts, not only internally but externally. And then not even shortly after that, I think we also had a tornado that came very close to the city. And then within a year of that, I think there was a fire that kind of happened. So she really kind of got baptized in trial by fire, you know, straight from the beginning when she joined us. But it just kind of shows the dedication that she's had for us. And even during that time, she stepped up since then in an interim role to help take on some responsibilities when I was out of the office for a while as well. So through all of this, her dedication did not go unnoticed by staff. She's been nominated several times for Employee of the Quarter. In, in 2022, one Employee of the Year for her services to staff and city. So it really is, I can't go without saying it tonight. And Jennifer's is a little longer because again, she is on my team. So I know a little bit more about her. But over the years, if you worked with Jennifer and you have heard her, she's made it very clear that she was not a fully vested employee until very recently. And, and I promised to make sure that I took a moment to acknowledge the vesting dance that Jennifer performed regularly for everybody on staff since becoming fully vested back in February. And so the moment is finally here. She is officially vested. And even though we don't have music queued up for like a celebratory dance, just know we will forever have that ingrained in our minds and hearts. But really, just on behalf of the city and staff, we sincerely thank you for all of your hard work and dedication and we look to forward to many more years to come with you. And as always, we have a five-year service award pin and plaque to commemorate her time here. So please join me in congratulating Jennifer on her five years of service at the city. All right. And then Casey, did you want to switch the slide on that one? Christina's got it for you. All right, perfect. So, so then, as I mentioned, we do have two tonight. So next, we are here to, to honor Sergeant Michael Maddox for his completion of his five years of service here at the city of Fair Oaks Ranch. So Sergeant Maddox actually began his career with the city of Fair Oaks Ranch also in 2020 as a patrol officer. And he very quickly distinguished himself as a very dedicated and a courageous member of the police department and just of our workforce in general. In October of 2020, he received a letter of commendation for his heroic efforts in reviving an unresponsive woman who was not breathing. With unwavering commitment, Sergeant Maddox and two fellow officers performed CPR for over nine minutes until EMS arrived, just exemplifying the life-saving role that our law enforcement officers play for our community every day. In 2020, 2021, he and his parjent, uh, parjent? Partner. Interim Sergeant in a HOSA. They actually gained local TV recognition with a really heartwarming story. Hopefully, some of you will remember this with the ace in the hole story in which they actually had helped free a 10-week-old puppy's head from a wooden cornhole board. And it went local on KSAT. I believe it even made it into the National People's Magazine Online syndication as well. So to see such, such small things in our police department that makes such a big impact on the everyday happiness and lives of people is just goes to show some of, some of the heartfelt dedications that, you know, Sergeant Maddox brings to our team. So continuing to make an impact, Sergeant Maddox has also been a part of the police department's team that won Back the Badge for the 5K back in 2022. His leadership and dedication led to a very well-earned promotion to his current role as sergeant back in 2023. And then by August of 2024, he was assigned interim sergeant over the role of the Criminal Investigations Department, where he currently serves right now. He has really just played an instrumental role in strengthening department, serving as a liaison for the hiring management team and successfully assisting in hiring four new officers and staff members to the police department just in the last few months. Beyond these professional duties, Sergeant Maddox has also been committed to fostering a positive workplace culture and as a volunteer member of the Employee Appreciation Committee, which we highly value, all of the input that we get. And he also plans and helps implement and initiates those activities that we do for the work environment for his colleagues. So he just really is a great team player all the way around. And tonight, we again proudly recognize Sergeant Maddox for his five years of outstanding service, leadership, and just overall dedication to the city and to his fellow employees here at Fair Oaks. The contributions that he's made and will continue to make have made a lasting impact, both on the department and the community. So join me in a round of applause for Sergeant Maddox. Until next time.
And thank you both for your commitment to our city and what you do for us every day, for the city staff, city council, and all of our residents. Thank you. Well, that completes the presentations that we had on the agenda tonight. We have four items under consent. The first item is approval of the February 20th, 2020, regular city council meeting minutes. Second approval and second reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas. Amending Chapter 1, General Provisions, Article 1.08, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, Section 1.08.003, Transportation Safety Advisory Committee of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch Code of Ordinances and Providing for Severability and Repealing Causes and an Effective Date. Third, approval of a resolution of the city council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, amending Resolution 2024-34, Adopting the Fair Oaks Ranch Transportation Safety Advisory Committee Rules and Procedures and Providing for an Effective Date. And last, approval of a resolution to appoint members to fill places on the city of Fair Oaks Ranch Transportation Safety Advisory Committee. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of these items from consent to consideration? Yes, Laura?
Item eight.
Anybody else? Then for the three items that we have under consent, which is items six, seven, and nine, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the consent agenda is approved. And with that, we'll move on to our consideration items tonight. And the first will be the one we removed from consent, which is the approval of a resolution of the city of council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, amending a resolution 2024-34, Adopting the Fair Oaks Ranch Transportation Safety Advisory Committee Rules and Procedures and Providing for an Effective Date. And this is on page 13 of the council packet. And you want me to just turn it over to you first, Laura?
Sure.
Okay.
I appreciate Eric coming up and bringing this to our attention. Where is he? Did he leave?
He left.
He left. Okay. So 8.4, which is on page 20, I appreciate that. Maybe we could do a little bit of cleanup of this wording before we approve it. I agree that we should have a rule about rehearing the same thing over and over again. But his comment was in the last sentence where it says, "Unless new pertinent safety information is provided by either the requister, who initially brought the issue forward, or by staff." I, I think we could just get rid of that whole last end of the sentence and just say, "Unless new pertinent safety information is provided," period. Because I think his concern is if the same requister comes back, they can't hear it. But then someone else can come forward with the exact same request and just kind of go around that rule. Yes, with the same exact request that was already ruled on. So I think we could address the concern by just cutting off after the word "provided", put a period there.
Who judges pertinent?
Oh, that's a lawyer question.
From a lawyer.
That's a good question.
Does staff determine the agenda?
So I would, I would think that that would be a function of the staff. I mean, if, if it's pertinent safety information, they would bring that forward. And ultimately, that committee can decide if they believe it's pertinent or not. If they don't want to reconsider it, then that, that's their finding is that we don't believe that that information changes anything. So I mean, that's what they're appointed for is to determine that.
How about we put, we replace where it says either the whole last pair, part of the sentence and just replace that with "as determined by the committee and/or staff," right? So the sentence would read, "Once an item has been heard and finally acted upon by the committee, it cannot be reheard for a period of 365 days from the day the committee heard the item unless new pertinent or safety information is provided as determined by committee, by the committee and/or staff."
That makes sense.
Okay. So Mayor, I move to amend this rules under this resolution. I move to approve this item with the amendment that I stated.
Second.
As determined by staff or committee?
By the committee and/or staff. Doesn't matter which order. Okay. "Once an item has been heard and finally acted upon by the committee, it cannot be reheard for a period of 365 days from the day the committee heard the item unless new pertinent safety information is provided, comma, as determined by the committee and/or..." safety information is provided, comma, as determined by the committee and/or staff, period.
Is, is acted upon meaning they heard it or they took action? Another lawyer question.
So, so acted upon to me indicates that there was action taken either to make a recommendation or not do anything. Either one of those things is action taken. It's an action item before you on the, so.
Scott, any issues? I know this was, you've gone through the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee. Now coming to us, I know that we approve it, and it's their recommendation that these, but do you see any issues or concerns?
No, I don't see the issues. And as the city attorneys say, I mean, the committee always has the prerogative to reconsider something at their discretion, so I don't see a conflict.
I don't think any further discussion. Unless somebody wants a comment from the audience, I hear, I see somebody standing up.
Did you have a comment on this change?
Chris Stepke, and I'm actually the vice chairman of the committee. This is one of the items that I didn't get a, or I missed. And one of my concerns would be, is there, is this the appeal process then? If somebody is not satisfied with or thinks, thinks they weren't treated fairly or whatever, an appeal that they can come back to the committee and, and address an issue again?
Are you referring to the wording in Section 8.4?
Yes.
I, I don't think we're talking about an appeal here.
It would only be pertaining to new or, or different information.
Okay. And then that, and then if that's newer or different, it really doesn't matter then if it's a year later, 365 days later?
That's right. So if they have new pertinent safety issue that made their original request different, then it could be heard within 365 days.
And otherwise, without new information, they could wait a year.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else here have any comments? Any other comments from council? All right. With the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are the motions? Quick peeking, Laura. Thank you. We'll move on to the second consideration item that we have on the agenda tonight, which is the consideration and possible action approving the final plat request for Greenland Ventures Limited for Stone Creek Ranch Unit 2B proposing 12 single-family residential lots. And this does have a presentation with it. It's short, but it's on page 37 of the packet. And Lee, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name's Lee Muniz, Manager of Engineering Services. I'm here to provide the short presentation for the Stone Creek Ranch Unit 2B final plat. So the Stone Creek Ranch Unit 2B final plat will be plating 12 single-family lots. All lots are approximately one acre in area. This will be the final phase of the Stone Creek Ranch development. P&amp;Z approved a recommendation of the preliminary plat back in the September meeting with two conditions, which are an adverse impact analysis will be conducted prior to the final plat approval. Second, approval of the variance for the three lots that do not meet the 150-foot minimum street lot frontage. City Council approved the Stone Creek Ranch Unit 2B preliminary plat on October 3rd with the same two conditions. Staff would like to recommend approval of the Stone Creek Ranch Unit 2B final plat. Please note that the final plat submittal has satisfied the two conditions from the preliminary plat. And with that, I'll take any questions. Yes, sir.
Any questions from council? And Lee, I just had a quick, quick question on the floodplain analysis.
Yes, sir.
And I think we're still working on portions of that.
Correct.
To determine the drainage area.
Yes, sir. The, currently, the floodplain is being revised through a letter of map provision. The current process is, is first that the, the engineers submit the letter of map provision to the communities, which is City of Fair Oaks Ranch and Kendall County. And then once the communities have reviewed and signed off on those letter map change or floodplain changes, then the submittal is then sent to FEMA for final approval. And then once that final approval through FEMA is done, then the maps will change. And then at that point, the city will get the notification that the maps are changed, to which we would make the necessary plat amendments for those changes.
So is that an amended plat that would come back to us? Or is that something staff would handle?
No, that would be amended plat provided by the developer.
And the reason I ask is there's two lots that I think are in the northeast portion of, well, they're in the northern portion of this. I think it's lots 110 and 111 that, and actually 110, which is the northernmost lot, is like half impacted by the drainage easement that goes through it.
I believe you're.
All I want is assurances that.
You're talking about these two lots, Mayor? Or, I'm sorry.
Go back to the other one that had the yellow. Or their most lot there.
This one, correct?
Yes.
On the cul-de-sac? Okay.
Because depending on where the drainage easement comes out at or where FEMA determines the floodplain to be, it could severely limit construction on that lot.
Correct. If you could see here, this line right here, so this is the lot in question. This is the, you can see the north arrow. This is the direction. They just put it so that's easier to view. So you can see here that this is actually the effective floodplain right here. And then this is the revised floodplain that they're planning on submitting to FEMA for final approval. So according to this plat, this, there's a drainage easement here that contains both of these easements. So they will have available land here to construct their home.
And I guess bottom line, all I'm looking for is assurances, how do we, how do we know that through this process that construction does not take place in what could be the FEMA floodplain?
Whenever they are required for these houses to be built, they're required to show the floodplain and the vicinity of the structure in relativity to the floodplain. And that's how we identify, okay, this structure is out of the floodplain. They're also required to do elevation certificates to ensure that their finished floor in their, in their minimum, their minimum finished floor or the lowest adjacent, no, the lowest finished floor is at least above the floodplain.
Okay. And these all come through you?
Correct. They, they come through our building codes, building permit process.
Okay. And so that's the way we keep a check on it to make sure that this doesn't.
Correct. Yes, sir. And then those, so those elevations will reflect the latest floodplain.
All right.
Which will be the, the approved floodplain once it comes through.
That answers my question.
So when does that, is that modified floodplain? When does that get approved?
It's currently, it's currently finished going through the city process. So once it goes to FEMA, FEMA has, they have a designated set amount of days that they have to review submittals. Typically, it's a 90-day window for the first review. And if it takes multiple reviews, then it's additional 90 every time it goes through review process. So it depends on how many reviews that FEMA takes to approve this. And then once it's approved, then there's an appeals protest period before it becomes effective, and that would be another 90 days.
Okay. But during all of that timeframe, no construction can take place on that lot?
Correct. Then that's, and that's one of the reasons why we designated a drainage easement between both floodplanes, encompassing both of them. So that way, in between, you have both of the floodplanes, so they're more protected at this point.
Okay. All right. You answered my question. Anybody else? Anybody else here tonight have any questions that they'd like to bring up related to this? Then could I get a motion to approve the final plat for Stone Creek Ranch Unit 2B?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Movement. Any other discussion from council? And with the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you, Lee.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for answering the questions.
Yes, sir.
And with that, we'll move on to the second consideration item that we had on the agenda for tonight, which is the consideration and possible action approving a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Bueno Prove Services LLC for the Detail Corn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project. Clayton, you're going to lead us through this one?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. I'm Clayton Holsher, Procurement Manager with the Finance Department. The city budgeted $388,232 this fiscal year for the Detail Corn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project. The project installs approximately 1,300 linear feet of sidewalk along the north side of Detail Corn between the Vantage Apartments and the Elcorn Ridge Square Gate intersection. The proposed sidewalk ties into the existing sidewalks on both ends to provide some continuity of sidewalks between Van Robb Elementary and the sports fields across from the Spring Creek United Methodist Church. It will also provide a safe and accessible path for pedestrians who use the corridor. Although the Van Robb Elementary School Attendance Zone, it was recently changed, which may reduce the number of families and school-aged children, we include as Exhibit A the, a multimodal transportation survey in August 2023, with the majority of residents responding that they would like to see more combined-use paths, shared-use paths, and sidewalks within the city. And as I mentioned earlier, that's included in the agenda packet. So in addition, several developers for the property in vicinity agreed to provide financial contributions to the city. In November, City Council, on November 16th, City Council approved a, a resolution to accept a $42,000 donation from SA Front Gate LLC, Elcorn Ridge Development SA LLC, and Elcorn Ridge SA LLC. And then an additional $10,000 monetary donation right away on, at Detail Corn LLC, and another $10,000 from Vantage at Fair Oaks LLC. So that totals up to $42,000 so far. So in order to support this effort, we advertised an invitation for bids back in January, and the bids came in on February 5th. We received 16 bids, and the lowest bid was from Bueno Pro Services LLC for an amount This vendor's performed work for the city, and they've done work for other nearby cities as well, in addition to private work. Staff recommends adding an additional 5% contingency, so that results in a total project cost of $277,513.65. And then additionally, we have the monetary donations to reduce our city's cost for the project. So if the project is approved, the construction would start after the school year ends, and it would be completed during the summer to minimize impact on all the, the school traffic and all the school activities going on. It supports Priority 3.4 of the Strategic Action Plan to enhance and ensure continuity of reliable roadway improvement initiatives, specifically Detail Corn Road. It provides a safe and accessible route for pedestrians and supports an alternate mode of transportation in the Detail Corn corridor. And then by competitively bidding it, we comply with all of our state procurement requirements. As I mentioned earlier, we budgeted $388,232 this fiscal year for the project, with that total project cost including the 5% contingency being $277,513.65. We will, we would utilize our standard construction agreement prior to the commencement of the work. We've included that as well with this agenda packet. So our recommendation is to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Bueno Pro Services LLC for the Detail Corn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project in the amount of $277,513.65, which includes contingency, expenditure of the required funds, and execution of all applicable documents by the city manager. And with that being said, myself and Grant are here to take any sort of questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions?
How many people are walking along that pathway now? Today, in today's term?
I don't know if we have an exact count for that.
Is, is anybody walking down that area?
Runners. Because I've been one.
I guess a better question might be who might use it if it was built? I know the Vantage is now not included in the Van Robb Attendance Zone, but I believe it would be a benefit to the city, especially for the folks who live on the western side of Elcorn Ridge. I can foresee them, the folks up and down Cheyenne Ridge, I think that's the second entrance. It's a shorter transit to walk along Deets if the sidewalk exists, as opposed to cutting through some of the side streets in Elcorn Ridge to get to Van Robb.
Hold on a sec. Were you done?
No.
Go ahead.
Laura, did you want to speak?
No, you, finish your question.
No, I just, it, it seems like maybe the circumstances have changed since we looked at this initially, was it 2023? Is that correct, when this was studied? But I just don't see a lot of activity, and we have a sidewalk that goes from maybe one entrance of Elcorn Ridge roughly to the, to the next entrance, if I, if I'm getting that correct. So I'm not sure I see the benefit of having that little sidewalk done. We have nothing else along Deets Elcorn. I mean, we've got an entire road down there that goes from there to Fair Oaks Parkway, and there is nothing else. So it just seems like that's kind of a sidewalk to nowhere right now. And in my opinion, that, that's a lot of money to spend if we have very little traffic or activity. And I don't know, and that's why I was asking, I don't know if the traffic is coming from the Elcorn Ridge subdivision primarily to walk to the school, which they are in that district. And they're, you know, that entrance that is closer to, closest to the school has the crosswalk, and we have the signs, and we, we're doing something in that area. So I personally don't see the benefit of, of spending this kind of money for that sidewalk, unless there's something that we're not aware of. And I drove it several times this last week to see if anybody, there's nobody walking through the ditch, there's nobody walking in the grass. And yes, runners do have to run, but we have that same problem all the way up and down Deets Elcorn. So I'm one not in favor of utilizing the money, even though we budgeted for it, I think we could redeploy it elsewhere.
I think I was going to ask a question very similar to what you were saying. So on either side of this sidewalk area you want to put, so it's going between, I wish we had a picture, but you know, there's the two entrances to Elcorn Ridge, this is a sidewalk between those two entrances. On either side of the entr, of those other entrances to Elcorn Ridge, is there another sidewalk on the other side of it?
I, yes. This proposed sidewalk would tie into the sidewalk in front of Vantage.
Okay.
And then on the east side, it would tie into the existing sidewalk at Elcorn Ridge and then Square Gate, that, that.
So right now, we have sidewalk on either side of these entrances, but between the entrances, it's just grass.
Or drainage ditch, or, right.
So you can't continuously walk along the sidewalk along that part of Deets Elcorn. You have to go into the road for a portion and then come back onto the sidewalk.
That's correct.
And on one end is a sports park, and the other end is a school. So to me, that would make sense to continue the sidewalk from the school to the sports park. As a sidewalk. So that, and that's what we're proposing, is to continue that sidewalk.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Scott? Oh, sorry. Ruben was up next. Okay.
The, that stretch does not abut Elcorn Ridge property, correct? Because I think there are several lots, I looked at the maps, and it looks to be that sidewalk would go along mixed use, was zoned for mixed-use village. Is that correct? And I know one of those lots had proposed to develop it, and I think there were C. Conveniences. If any one of those lots decide to change their plans and develop it, would this sidewalk then be destroyed or damaged?
The sidewalk is planned in the city's right away, not on the.
Okay.
Private property side of the, the property.
But to get into that property to do whatever they might want. But to get into that property to do whatever they might want to do?
Correct. If any of those lots develop and have to put in a driveway to access, for example, that mixed-use development in front of Elcorn Ridge, then they would have to repair the sidewalk.
And the other, I think there's a section, so the way I read the map, there's like two or three lots that are mixed-use village, and then another one or two lots that are actually not in our city limits. And then you get to Vantage. That's how I read it. So we'd be spending quite a bit of money to connect the sidewalk where it joins property that's either not in our city limit and/or it's mixed-use village for which there may be development on those lots. And then I know there's a stretch where it looks like there's a guardrail and then some paved drainage culvert. Would the sidewalk go over that? Or how would that work? Like, are we redoing the guardrail and having to go around that drainage area?
We would, so we would have to push that guardrail back to make room for a sidewalk that's adjacent to the road. It would be a curved, a curb would be installed there, so the sidewalk would be a little bit elevated above this elevation of the road. And then once you get to that concrete drainage channel, it would follow, I guess it's on the north side of the drainage channel, it would follow that, the drainage channel, all the way up toward the Vantage and tie into the sidewalk at that point.
And since this was budgeted, have you all had requests from those neighborhoods asking about the status of the sidewalk? Or if, you know, has it, has it been talked about recently, anyone that's been interested in it being built?
The only folks that we've talked to have been the developers in the area. And again, that includes Elcorn Ridge, Front Gate, the Vantage, and then I guess the Duplex Apartments next to the Vantage. And all of those developers were supportive. And of those, it was the, two of the developers or one developer has made that donation toward the project.
And last question. The field that it would conceivably connect to, that's private property, correct?
Correct.
And outside city limits?
Correct.
Okay.
Scott? I, everything I've heard is already, were questions that I had. I guess the last thing was, I want to make sure I understand. Have we collected all the promised money from the developers?
Not all of it. We've collected the majority of it, which is the $42,000. The remaining $20,000 is still pending.
Okay, and it's been pending over a year?
Correct.
So whether or not, and it's from people outside our city limits, so whether or not we're actually going to get that funding is kind of up in the air. It's easy to say, I'm going to give you money, but then to collect the check is another thing.
Right.
Okay, I'm, this is not something I think that we need to, we need to do right now. If it looks like at some point we need to readdress it later on down the road, I'd be willing to consider it. He's, he's on. Maybe I got the bad one?
It just isn't close enough to your mouth.
I said, I think we just give some thought to what happens to the $42,000 that we've already collected if we don't go through with it.
Anybody else?
I actually would like that question answered right now. What will happen with the $42,000?
So my guess would be you would return it if it was donated for a specific project, and you're not going to do that project.
I suspected that was the answer, but I wasn't going to answer it myself.
So there are stipulations on that money, the way that we received it?
It was in the resolution that was approved. It was specific for this project.
But I believe it was divided between a requirement for tree compensation and for the sidewalk.
So there would be a. The $42,000, about 22, I think it was 22 was for tree mitigation, and 20 was a donation.
Yeah, so the.
20 would have to be what we'd look at and may have to return.
There a time limit on how long we can keep the money until we decide how to use it?
I think.
That was not specified.
My belief is that yes, at some time, we'd have to bring this back for the 22,000. If it was given to us specifically for a purpose, and we're not going to use it for that purpose, we'd probably have a requirement to do the right thing and return the money. Anybody else? So I had a couple of comments on this, and probably in line with what Scott and Keith are talking about. I don't know that this is the right time that we should be building the sidewalk. And so what I went back to was the history on the sidewalk, and where did this, where did the concept for the sidewalk come from? And really what I, it's hard to find detailed information on it, but what I really got back to, I believe, is during the timeframe, 2020, 20, early 2021, the developer from the Vantage Apartments came to us and requested that this sidewalk connect the Vantage Apartments to Van Robb Elementary. And I believe, never fully stated, but believe in, we have a project thing on it, that talks about it's for the walking of kids from the Vantage Apartments to the school, which makes sense, a good project, and that's why they were going to contribute, I believe, to the project. But what you've mentioned, well, and then in November of '21, we as a council adopted the roadway CIP, and we added this project to our roadway CIP, which is the reason that staff has moved forward with it in developing this project. In August of this year, I'm not sure the exact dates, but the Bernie Independent School District did redistrict this area, and the Vantage Apartments was taken away from districted at Van Robb Elementary and was moved to Kendall Elementary. And so now all the kids that live in Vantage Apartments all go to Kendall Elementary. And so does it make sense to spend this amount of money to build a sidewalk that for the original purpose, we're not getting to? And there, you know, as we go through this, you mentioned the multimodal demonstration, and we did, and we took, and I agree with that, but I'm not sure that what we're doing here is really tying into a all-city-wide multimodal capability that we want along Detail Corn Road. I think we can say it ties into it, but I'm not sure that that's really the capability that we're trying to get to as part of putting this sidewalk in. And if that's something that we're really looking at, then I would say, save the money now. Let's develop a, that's really what we want, and let's look at it sometime in the future of what we want as part of multimodal. Do you want to add to it, or?
I have a question, actually.
Uh huh.
So in our roadway CIP, we also have the reconstruction of this entire stretch of Detail Corn at some point, correct?
It's not in the current CIP, but some future CIP, yes.
So we have the east side, but we don't have the west side?
Correct.
Okay. I thought we did have it in there. It's just far out. Nope, we never put it in? Okay, never mind.
I have a question, Greg.
Yes, ma'am.
Where, when is this, the kids that go to, that are in Vantage go, going to Kendall? Because I know kids that live in Vantage now that go to Van Robb this year.
The Vantage Apartments currently are districted to Kendall Elementary.
I don't know, I don't know where you got that information. I know kids, I have a very, a friend who has kids that go to Vantage.
So there may be, there may be families that live there.
Yeah.
That requested an exception to currently continue to attend at Van Robb, and maybe it was granted by the school. I don't know that answer. I do know that.
I don't think she, I don't think she asked. I think they just go to Van Robb. That's why I'm confused, because I don't, that wasn't a request, she didn't have to request. They just go to Van Robb. So I, that's, I'm, I'm curious as to why they told you that, because I don't think that's accurate. I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, because I know people that are, that live there currently that go to Van Robb, that I, they did not request it.
All right.
A waiver or whatever.
A map of the current school districts was presented at the last TSAC meeting, and the boundaries are city limits. So the, the Vantage Apartments are not in Van Robb District anymore.
Right. So would that be going forward? That's what I mean, like this year?
Well, that was effective this school year. But again, yeah, they may be grand, there may be people grandfathered. But the map shows them going to Kendall.
Gotcha.
And I have talked to the school board member, Rich Senna, about it. We're aware that, yes, the Vantage Apartments, under current school districting, those apartments are scheduled, are districted for Kendall.
Certain, certain of the people that have lived there, though, may be grandfathered in, I guess. Okay.
Or get some exception. They could do that.
Okay.
With that, because it was on the CIP, I'd just like to make a statement that I appreciate all the work that the city staff has continued to do on this. You know, as we adopted the CIP, that establishes the priorities that we want for the city. And you have done that diligent work and brought this to us, so I appreciate the efforts that you put into it. It's just my belief at this time, the purpose of what we started this out for is no longer in effect. And along with that, I think Ruben kind of brought up the question. I have received and have not heard of any comments from any residents that live in Elcorn Ridge that have requested this sidewalk. Nor have I heard anything that's come out that said that they requested. And that could make a difference, but in my determination. But right now, and through Elcorn Ridge, they all have access to get to Elcorn Ridge Road, which would lead them out of the subdivision. It may be 50 yards longer for some residents, but it's not significant. So they do still have a safe route to get out of the community and get to the school if they're walking. Any other comments? Any comments from anyone here tonight? Then what I'll do is make the motion for approval of this, and we'll move from there. So it could get a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Bueno Pro Services LLC for the Detail Corn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project in the amount of $277,513.65, which including contingency, expenditure of the required funds, and execution of all applicable documents by the city manager. And do we have a motion? Okay, without a motion, the consideration item fails. And so will not be approved. Couple items related to this, because we have, we have bids that are out.
Sure.
We really need to, we have to close the bid window.
Correct. So Chapter 252 of the Texas Local Government Code, which is what we follow for this particular project, just says that the governing body may reject any and all bids. So that would really be the, if we're not going to award, it would just be to reject all bids. Doesn't go any detail of how you have to do that. It just says that you may reject any and all bids.
Okay. And then with this, it's still in our roadway CIP. And because we don't want to move forward with it, we probably should make a motion to remove it from the CIP? Yes, ma'am.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to reject all bids for the Detail Corn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project and remove it from the roadway CIP.
And I'll second. Any other comments from council?
I'm going to restate that because I didn't have my microphone on.
Can you repeat the, the motion, please? The sound did not come through.
That was my fault. Apologize. I move to reject all bids for the Deets Elcorn Road Sidewalk Improvement Project and remove it from the roadway CIP.
And I, I've got it written down. And I second. And any other comments from council? Then with the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved. And Clayton, as always, thank you for your thorough analysis of this and all the work that you did on it. And with that, we'll move on to our workshop item tonight, which is the interlocal agreement with Bear County Emergency Services District Number 4 for EMS transport services. Scott, you want to take this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. This workshop is to provide an update to, or on the interlocal agreement with EST 4 for ambulance transport services. It's a follow-up to our initial workshop we held last month on February 6th, during which you had a preliminary draft of the agreement. And so I want, tonight I want to summarize the major proposed changes to that, to that agreement at this workshop and discuss any additional changes or adjustments that should be incorporated into the final agreement. At the end of this workshop, I would like to get to a point where we can incorporate final changes for a consideration item, ideally at the next council meeting. Brief recap, as I know you're all aware, the city must secure a new EMS transport provider following Acadian Ambulance Services' decision not to renew its contract, which, and that contract expires on April 30th of this year. EST 4 already provides fire and first response services to Farrocks Ranch. It's done so for many years. And EST 4 began its own ambulance transport services effective January 1st of this year. So given their presence in our community, I think they're well positioned to assume full EMS transport responsibilities. The proposed agreement, as revised, would establish, would now be a six-month contract, as proposed, from April 1st through September 30th of this year. Some of the key, I'll go through some of the major revisions to this agreement from when we talked about it in February. We've made several to incorporate both council direction and further discussions with the EST into this agreement. And I'll just start. The most notable change, of course, is the template itself. And the agreement that's before you tonight, in most instances, follows the Bear County, countywide EST contract with what is now Allegiance Mobile Health Services. It follows that contract almost verbatim. We modified a few key provisions that are specific to our city, but this is effectively a copy of the Allegiance Bear County agreement. This is in response to the council asking to follow a, an ambulance-specific model rather than the previous agreement we had, which basically modeled our fire and first response agreements. So the, so the template itself has changed. That's the biggest change. Regarding the response time, the current draft calls for an average of 11 minutes or less across all priority levels. This actually exceeds the Bear County benchmark, which requires 11 minutes only at their highest, highest priority time. EST doesn't, the EST 4 doesn't, does, I'm sorry, does not dispatch based on the severity of the call. They, they, the goal is to respond to every call as quickly as possible. So the response time is modified from, from the template in our favor. Staffing and equipment standards, the agreement does specify that EST 4 will provide a mobile intensive care unit level staffing, or MICU, and that essentially ensures that there is at least one paramedic-certified staff on each ambulance. This would only change if there is like a COVID-type event or other unforeseen emergency that artificially limits the number of paramedics available. That language is in there, so in such an unforeseen catastrophic scenario, we want to make sure that the ambulances will still run, even if we're short paramedics for some reason. But in all reasonable circumstances, every unit will have at least one full paramedic available and on, and on the, on the unit. The updated agreement that you have at your dais also updates the billing and financial responsibility. There is language per our last discussion that clarifies that EMS transport services are not free and that EST 4 is solely responsible for billing its patients and third-party payers, as the case may be. The agreement you have tonight, the updated agreement does include an Exhibit A, which shows the current billing rates from EST 4's billing contractor. That's provided for you as a model. The modified agreement that you have with the changes also includes the EST's insurance, insurance rates, both the per occurrence rate and the umbrella coverage. They have a $4 million umbrella policy and a $7 million. They have a $4 million umbrella policy and a $7 million aggregate policy is what they currently hold, which far exceeds the requirements in our current Acadian contract as well as most of the agreements that we have citywide. And the final change that was not in your packet but is in the updated draft before you is about bariatric care. EST Four clarified to me earlier this week that its stretcher units are rated up to 700 pounds, but in the rare event that a transport above that would be required, they would rely on mutual aid for such an event. Those are the major changes from last time, and what's in your packet, Mayor and council. Again, this workshop is an opportunity to provide, obviously review the latest agreement draft to provide any direction you may have on further adjustments. Following this discussion, my intent is to work with the EST to finalize this agreement as needed. And like I said, ideally bring this back to you at the next council meeting. The intent, of course, is to provide a smooth transition after our agreement with Acadian expires. It's the same financial commitment that we have currently, so the budget is unchanged. And this agreement, I think, aligns with the regional model that we've had for many years and Bear County currently uses with its other emergency services districts. We have several folks from EST Four tonight that can answer some operational questions that you may have, if you have them. I see Commissioner Haygood, Chief Ramon, Division Chief Brown, as well as EST Administrator Charles Lodge are all here to help me out, as I will probably need it. But that's the summary of the changes, Mr. Mayor and council. With that, I will yield. Thank you.
Good cover. Yes, Scott.
Scott, I've got a question on Section 5.02. I've got a question on Section 5.02, where it has the city agreeing to provide a station capable of housing an ambulance crew 24 hours a day at no cost to EST Four. I think that you guys just built a facility that we can throw a rocket from here, I think. So why is, why are we providing?
This was, and I believe this was suggested at the last meeting, so I don't believe the intent was, is that they would specifically be stationed at the station. But per the current agreement we have with Acadian, we incorporate the language into here that it would be available to them if they wanted to use it.
But this provision is considered to be part of compensation structure. That's what bothers me. So if that has a value, if that station has a value, I would like to know what that value is. And if we don't need to include that because of the recent construction of a new facility, I'd like this strictly.
I'm not opposed to that, that change. But again, this was just, what this provision was recognized in the current agreement, as well as this one, is that the overall contribution that the city provides, which is $73,500 per year plus the facility, is provided as the subsidy to the provider and not, and is separate from any billing that goes to the patient. That was the intent of the section. I don't have strong feelings about either way, but that's why it was in there.
But if we do remove it, EST had really no plans to utilize the building?
Not to my knowledge.
And if we did remove it, it wouldn't change the price that we're paying per month for the service?
No, sir.
Go ahead.
I would like to point out that our current agreement with the EST for their fire and EMS already allows them to use this facility. So we don't need to add it to this one, because they already have the ability to use it from our current contract for fire and EMS. And they're using the same equipment, which is the point I'm going to make here in a second. So. I'm, thank you very much, Scott, for the redoing of the contract, because it was, I like the format. I appreciate you putting it into Allegiant. As a reminder, we already have an agreement with EST Four to provide fire and first responder, emergency medical. And that still is in effect, and that still allows them to use both all the firehouses in the city of Ferrocks Ranch at no cost. So they already have the ability to use that right now and to man them as necessary. So I don't think we need to add it to this contract, because it's already in the old contract. It's not specific.
So it would come out of this one?
I'm okay with taking it out of this one, because it's already in the other one. I have a couple of questions. This matches really, really well to the Allegiant contract, so I appreciate it. I see under Section 406, the new 406, we added a 20% fractile. What is that about?
That is, that is how the EST provides their reporting for EMS through it. It's, they work with STRAC, the South Regional Texas Advisory Council, who coordinates all the emergency services in there. They provide, the EST already provides per response, per unit data to us, but STRAC also provides responses in quintiles. I guess it would be of highest response to, I guess, longest response to quickest response. So it's just additional reporting that's provided in 20% increments.
Okay. It doesn't make it sound like they have to provide to you detailed call response. It just says, they just have to give it to you in fractals.
They...
Shall provide continuous response capability for all calls and shall track and report its average 20% fractile monthly. So to me, that we're not requiring them to tell us how many calls they responded to and what the response times of each of those calls were, we're just saying, give us the average in 20% fractals every month. I think I would rather see their response for every call.
And we receive that data now, so...
I know, but I want to make sure we continue to get that.
That's fine.
So if we could just change that wording back, I appreciate that. They want to give us 20% fractals, too. That's fine. But I think I'd rather like to see calls, like... Because to me, it matters if we have five calls at 10 minutes and then one call at 45. Like knowing the individual calls and how the deviation is important.
Sure.
Okay.
And the report also provides the locations as well, so you can look at it that way as well?
Yeah, and if we get it already, let's just make sure we have it in the contract, so we continue to get it. I mean, it's not an additional request. One other question. Probably have a little bit more discussion on it, so I'll let other questions go first, and then I'll come back. Okay.
So the, would the goal be eventually, if this goes through, would the two different contracts merge into one agreement, or we'll always have two separate?
Ultimately, that would be the purview of the council, but as we enter into a long-term negotiations with, on all the services, assuming we stick with EST Four for both our fire and first response, as well as ambulance, I think a consolidated agreement would be beneficial.
Well, and the reason I ask that is, unless I missed it in a different part, 9.19 states this is the final entire agreement between the parties heretofore. No other agreements regarding the subject matter shall be deemed to exist. I'd like to maybe clarify or have some language that nothing in this agreement alters or modifies the terms of the other agreement. That way there's no confusion.
Pays to have a lawyer on.
It's free.
I was going to ask the same question, because since that, we're currently getting first response services. I'm glad you brought that up, because it was, it appeared to me in 3.01 that we're taking the first response medical services and wrapping it into this document and transportation. So I just want to be sure that's really clear, what we're doing, and we're not running conflict with our current other contract. So just a comment, following Ruben's comment. In 4.02, Scott, I think your point about they would staff it with an EMT and a paramedic. I think maybe need to check the wording where it says, "District shall make every effort to staff." I think it probably says "district shall staff", because you do have the exception down there under the last two sentences, where if they run into a situation, then, you know, that's an exception to it. So making every effort to staff and staffing, in my mind, are two different concepts. So I just wanted to be sure, we might clarify that language there, since you had the exception noted. And let me see, I think I had one other. You know, we've talked about this before, and I know the EST you represented, they have 4 million and 7 million limits on their insurance. I'd like at least our insurance language to be up a little higher. I mentioned this before, and I think in the last meeting, that $1 million is too low for anybody that we contract with out there. So I know they exceed it, but they could change their insurance policies to drop down to the 1 million. So I would like our limits to be equal to what they provide, since they already have that anyway. So that was in Section 6.01. And that shouldn't cause any harm to them at all, because they already have that insurance and they already would have to show us as a party to the insurance.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you...
I'm confused, because we have, if you have a million underlying, an 11 million essentially in excess, you've got a total of 12 million dollars.
Where's the 11 million?
Seven and four, right?
Well, these are just our minimums.
Mine says two and four.
Mine says one. I don't know which document we're looking at.
What is the total insurance, underlying and excess and umbrella? Is this what we're looking at right now?
There's a red line version.
1 million combined single limit. Umbrella 500, so you've got 6 million, right, Ruben? Right? That's the way I read it? You've got 6 million.
Updated one that's in front of you. It's redlined. That, those numbers aren't the one that we're going off of.
So they're different numbers?
Yes.
Mine did not show that.
Okay, so, all right, so there's, there's a million combined single limit, umbrella two, and an aggregate of four.
Showing five now, so yours is wrong also.
No, this, no, this is the right one.
This is the right one.
They put this at our station.
This is the right one, so...
It's not right.
The one she has on the screen is not right.
Three with an aggregate of four.
Keith was saying.
Is that the way you read it, Ruben?
One, underlying.
One, CSL.
Two excess. Not to exceed four of the aggregate.
Total.
Yeah.
So we have four?
So three, but not to exceed four, depending how many people are involved, that sort of thing. So essentially, four.
Okay. That's better than one.
Or five. Oh, it's definitely more than one. Way more than one.
That was my comment.
Yeah, way more than one.
That's fine.
There's, in my opinion, plenty of coverage, especially when you're dealing with potential...
Right.
...immunity issues.
My only point, my only point was 1 million is too low for anybody, so...
It's definitely more than one.
And I'm much happier. That's all that I had.
Any other comments on the, for the council?
Add one more. I would suggest 9.14, the indemnity provision from the district to the city, either bold it or underline it. That way it meets a conspicuity standard. Because people will usually challenge indemnity provisions if it's not conspicuous. So usually you'll either font it bigger, underline it, or bold it or something.
Entire section, you're suggesting?
Yeah.
9.14?
Okay. Laura?
Questions before I ask? Okay. I have a question on 501. So I know we talked about 502 earlier. 501 is the payment structure. Because we already have a contract with EST Four and are already paying for all of the people that are responding now, they're not going to have additional people respond. They're having the same people respond that we're paying for under our current contract. So why are we paying them anything? Because they're charging the users for the transport. If we don't have this contract at all, the same ambulance and the same people are showing up unseen. They're already, we're already paying for their availability and response. The only thing new is they're now transporting them to a hospital or wherever. And that transport cost, they are charging to the users. So why are we paying for the same people we're already paying for in our main contract to respond when we're already paying for them to respond? And then they're going to be charging the customer for the transport portion. So when we had Acadian, when we have Acadian now, we have Acadian show up with an additional ambulance and additional two people. And that's what we're paying the money for, to have that ambulance and those two people show up and be around, and then they charge the customer. The ambulance that's going to show up after this contract is the same ambulance we're already paying for them to show up on in our other contract. So why are we paying for the same people and the same equipment twice? That's my question.
I understood it that way. When I had it explained to me, I mean, maybe we could get some clarification, but I think that there's different levels of training of these employees that come.
Same employees. Yep. They're, these same people are showing up right now. There, like, there was a call down the street from my house, and the EST Four ambulance with their two, with the paramedic and EMT showed up as the first responder, which we pay for. And Acadian also showed up, and then Acadian transported. They're already showing up, and we're paying for that. So why do we need to pay for that twice?
Yeah, and I'll let Chief Ramon speak to this as well. But my understanding, right now, in the current environment, we have EST Four for fire and first response. So on a medical call, they come typically with their rescue truck or whatever units available, as the, or whatever is first available, I presume.
I believe their SOP says their ambulance will show up. But, okay.
Well, I, that could be, but prior to January 1st, they didn't have ambulances, so they were responding with a rescue truck or something similar, which... So that was, so that was the first response. That's what we were paying for under that agreement. And like you said, Acadian would come with the ambulance transport if dispatched soon thereafter, right? So under, regardless of which provider we contract with for transport post-April 30th, I believe it's incumbent upon state to designate an ambulance transport provider, whether it's EST Four or someone else. So someone still has to transport the person to the facility.
I think our contract can do that without paying them more money for the same people we're already paying for, because they're charging the customers for the cost of the transport. You see what I'm saying? We could write this whole contract and remove 501, or remove the cost, and allow them to charge our customers and to be the person that provides the service and for us to oversee how they do that.
And they certainly could do that.
That's right.
But again, we've provided the subsidy to Acadian for many years to have that service immediately available to us.
They provided additional people and additional equipment on top of EST Four. If we were in any other part of Bear County and we had Allegiant, both the EST and Allegiant would show up, and we would have two sets of medical providers on the scene at some point. And one would leave and the other one would transport. We are losing one set of medical providers... We are losing one set of medical providers unseen. And the people that are showing up are the same people we're paying for right now.
Just to clarify, so the Acadian contract we have now, our annual contract amount that we pay is for them to station a transport vehicle in the city. And that's, we've given them that location. I mean, basically is to have.
Essentially, yes, they have a dynamic deployment, but effectively, yes, it is to have a unit available to the city, yes.
And sometimes it's not 100% available, I get it.
Right.
But that was the essence of the transport. So I'm just trying to clarify. And so what Laura's saying is that, are we getting, or maybe the question is, are we getting additional transport capability if we engage in this contract with ESD4? Are we going to have more? Are we getting the same level? Now they have the ambulance capability and they can transport, is that already considered part of our existing agreement? So I'm just trying to clarify what we're getting for our existing contract if we're not going to have an ambulance for transport stationed in our city like Acadian did.
Yeah, the premise of, I believe, of reframing the contract in this format was to distinguish the fire and first response agreement that we currently have with ESD4 from the ambulance transport service that we were proposing for them to engage in to take over. So to me, I understand they're provided by the same, or would be provided by the same organization, ESD4, but they're, at least in terms of the two contracts they have now, they're distinct services. They may be stationed at Ralph Fair Road rather than on the Parkway, but the response time will be the same or better than what we have now and it's specifically for that service. That's the premise of this agreement.
Understand. However, with Acadian, we're also getting a whole additional equipment and two other people. And we're not getting that here. No, we're kind of just discussing what we want to put in the contract, but.
Y'all have to speak up here, guys. If y'all don't speak.
Well, thank you for pointing that out, Chief. Why don't you explain why I'm wrong?
Well, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I think in light of moving forward, appropriate information would allow all of us to make a very knowledgeable decision going forward. So I am Fire Chief Craig Ramone with ESD4 Bear County Fire Rescue. To answer the question, we are not sending less people than when y'all were getting Acadian or Allegiance or AMR. We have added an additional 12 people from the people that we were sending previously to staff the ambulances. Those additional 12 people are two per box, per station. We are still sending our fire trucks, just as we did before with paramedics and EMTs on them, with our ambulance to the heart attacks, the shortness of breath, the cardiac arrests, the chest pain calls, anything that's going to require additional manpower. So before we had our ambulances, we had just one crew at each house. The difference was that if they went on a medical call, they got in a rescue truck that didn't have fire suppression capabilities and rolled to that call. If they got a fire call in your city, they would go out to the bay and get in the fire truck and come to your call. Those same people on that rescue truck and those fire truck are still coming. And in addition, two more people are coming on the ambulance, just as they would if they worked for a third-party provider. So we are not rolling with the same people. We have added four people per shift with those ambulances to respond with those first responders that have always come before. That is why I think the information is not accurate.
I appreciate you giving that clarification. So the fire truck, so the rescue trucks also respond for every medical call?
We have ordered new pumpers that are rescue pumpers because I started a movement where we were getting rid of our non-fire suppressive rescue trucks. Because when, that was something that was started before I came along. And when I became the chief, I felt like us responding to your city in a rescue truck with our firefighters that doesn't have firefighting capabilities puts us at a huge disadvantage and your citizens at a huge disadvantage from us being able to respond to the next call, maybe one street over for a house fire, because we're in a vehicle that does not suppress fire. So we have taken all of our rescue stuff off of the one rescue truck that does not suppress fire and moved it onto our engines. And so now we're running three-man engines instead of one- or two-man engines. And we're running a two-man ambulance that we never ran before. So.
I don't think I understood the answer.
So our rescue truck isn't going to come anymore because that rescue truck is out of service. All of the equipment is now coming on a fire truck that used to just come in a rescue truck, but there was nobody at the station to man that fire truck.
Okay, so the answer is yes, but just not in a rescue truck and a fire truck?
Correct. The firefighter, the firefighter EMTs with equipment are still rolling to the same calls we always have in addition to that ambulance. They're just not coming in a rescue truck anymore.
Okay, so I guess that wasn't as important in the answer as they're showing up in a fire vehicle.
Correct.
Along with the ambulance.
Correct.
And so there will still be, for every medical call or just certain medical calls?
For a high-grade medical calls. Now, I will tell you in full transparency, the reason y'all have been seeing an ambulance in your city now is because through discussions with my board and with Scott, I decided as the fire chief that rather than sending a fire truck to all calls, I would send my ambulance when both are available to all calls, so that if Acadian or Allegiance or whoever you used had a super extended ETA, we could just load the patient up and take them and not make them wait as we used to have to do in the past. That is why we're rolling the ambulances current today into the city of Fair Oaks in lieu of the fire truck. But if it is a call that's going to require more than two people, as we did in the past, what we did was we sent two engines from two different stations. Now we're sending an engine from one station that the same ambulance is coming from to that same call and still expecting Acadian to show up. But if they don't, we have an ambulance there to take that patient. And this is just something we did just to, for the benefit of the citizens and the city as we were talking about moving forward. If we were living by the same contract right now and not putting the citizens first, we would not be sending an ambulance to this city. They would just be showing up in the same fire truck they used to always show up in. But it's important enough to me as the fire chief to send that ambulance to your citizen, contract agreement are not in place, so that they can transport that patient if your contract provider not showing up in time.
How many ambulances did y'all add to this service from ESD4?
We added two full-time ambulances. We have three, so one's backup in case there's an issue with one of the ambulances.
And how many staff did you add, did you say?
12.
12, okay.
I'm sorry, so Chief, I just had a question. So I appreciate you giving that answer. So for a non-high call, was, I don't know what the official term is.
Non-critical.
Non-critical, thank you. For a non-critical call, before you had the ambulance, you would send a rescue or fire truck to respond and Acadian comes with the ambulance?
Correct.
And now you still respond with one unit, you're just not responding with the fire unit, you're responding with the ambulance unit.
Correct, which is then leaving our firefighters.
But that was your guys' choice. You're still sending people there.
Yeah, that was our choice.
You're still sending one unit. You're getting one unit response with a paramedic EMT. And so after we sign this contract, we're going to get that same, one unit show up for a non-call. Correct?
Correct.
So we're getting one unit now and after this contract, we're still getting one unit. Just, okay. And then for the high calls, you would send two units now. And when we sign this contract, you're sending two units. So what's the difference?
The difference is that we have a lot of equipment that we didn't have before when you only had a first responder contract. I mean, you were paying Acadian for the ambulance, for that heart monitor, the IV setups, the medications, the oversight, all of that. The maintenance of those vehicles.
Weren't they charging the customer for that?
They do, they do transport the customer. We are transporting, are billing the customer that gets transported. However, the return rate on those bills, you're doing good if you get 30% of what you charge back. 30%. That is what is expected to get back if you're doing a great job. Think we're getting a little off of the.
Okay, so I think, so, well, I was just getting down to the point. So really, the $6,000 that we're paying is to ensure we have a fully equipped NICU ambulance.
Which we didn't have before.
That's what we were paying Acadian for. You're going to be giving, ensuring that with this amount of money.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not a different number of units showing up, it's the type of unit that's showing up that we're really paying for.
Correct.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand what we're paying for.
Correct.
That's what I'm trying to make sure I understand. Okay, so that's what I wanted to get to, is what is the $6,000 for? Because if it's the same number of units showing up, I don't understand that. But if it's, we're ensuring that a fully NICU certified unit is showing up, that is of value. So I think I can understand that.
And then the other thing I'd like to point out, just in full transparency, I've heard several times that Acadian has left a ambulance in your city and that is absolutely not true. What they do is they go to your station over there by Rain Tree Woods and they do a shift change or they restock their ambulance. But what they truly do is they sit at the QT and when the county gets low on ambulances, that ambulance that's dedicated to y'all or dedicated to be close by will go sit closer to downtown San Antonio to run another call, which is why sometimes they have extended ETAs. You have never had a dedicated ambulance from Acadian to your city. Now, you did from AMR because I worked on that ambulance. I was stationed at Rain Tree Woods for two years. I worked 24-hour shifts. We slept in that little building. But Acadian never had a dedicated ambulance for your city. You had a contract that dedicated they'd be available to you. Thanks, Chief. Ruben, do you have something else?
No changes with that.
So based on, any other changes, any other requirements? Any questions from anyone here tonight? Scott, you got the?
Yeah, just to recap and clarify, I have strike section 5.02 specify specific run data on section 4.07, modify 9.19 so to recognize that the other agreement exists, change the verbiage on the agreement exclusivity. 4.02 change, make every effort to staff shall and emphasize section 9.14.
That sounds good.
Good.
Yeah.
And the way ahead on this is we'll make the changes, still has to go through the ESD for.
Yes, the ESD did discuss this at their last meeting. I know that they're going through their attorney review right now and I believe the intent is to bring it back in at their, at their April meeting? Or you mean, or one more March, I think.
Charles Lousier, ESD4 Administrator. So speaking for myself, for Charles, I didn't hear anything substantial discussed tonight that would derail it. Scott's done a great job turning it very quickly. I expect he can get it to me for, we happen to have a meeting next week on the 12th and I would be happy to take it forward to my board at that time for consideration of adopting the agreement. We have passed it through our attorney and he had no substantial changes. So I would be happy to take it forward to my board next Wednesday. Sorry, usually my voice carries well. So, but no, that was it for us. Thank you.
And for us, it'll come back to the March 20th. Council meetings, what we'd anticipate. At March 20th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What else?
That's it for me.
That's it?
Good discussion.
It was a good write-off.
A lot of good topics covered as part of it. That covers all the items that we had to go through tonight as part of the council packet. Does any council member have any announcements that they'd like to make tonight?
We are not going to meet before my daughter turns 12, so happy birthday, Charlotte.
What day?
March 14th.
Anybody else? Got a couple announcements to run through. The police department's doggy fun run is scheduled for March 8th, this Saturday. It'll be at the kickoff is at Siblo Creek Community Church at 8:00. Bring your pet, bring your dog out. They got some activities. There'll be water stations along the way and it is set up as a walk or run event. It's really a community participation event. Come out and join us. The construction on battle intense that's been delayed now for three weeks was scheduled to start on Monday and it'll run through, I think we're scheduled through the entire week, but we don't think it'll take that long. During that timeframe, battle intense will be closed down to one lane, but they will be allowing directional, both directions to go through that one lane. They'll have flaggers out there to control traffic. Just expect some traffic delays as you go through there. Tomorrow morning on Rolling Acres, the public work staff is going to be testing the halt system that was newly installed this year over the Post Oak Creek. And so from 10 to 11, you can expect some delays there as they're going through it. And election day is coming up. It's May 3rd to vote in the municipal election. The last day to register as part of this election is April 3rd. So if you'd like to vote in it and you're not registered, April 3rd is the last day to register. Yes, sir?
My mic's dead.
Okay, what you got?
Was that changed?
Yeah, it's on the bridge. They're going to start pumping concrete. I don't have the dates, but it starts next week.
Did they contact you? I got, I got an email in my city email concerning, I believe they were supposed to start pumping tonight for, concrete for the bridge.
But the.
On Ralph Fair Road.
And the, as part of the pumping, there'll be no impact to traffic is part of that. But what they did say is there'll be a lot of heavy equipment that'll be entering and exiting the roadway.
Be aware.
So look out for the heavy equipment within the area. So yes, it may start tonight. I don't have the exact dates, but if it does, the good news is they get every closer, every day closer to finishing that portion of the bridge.
They're zooming right along. And I think you guys are testing the halt system tomorrow, right?
Yes, on Rolling Acres over Post Oak Creek. 10 to 11. Scott, any other announcements?
Nothing further from me.
For the council, any council member have any items that you'd like added to a future agenda? Nope. And for tonight, we have no requirements to go into executive session, heartbreak. Christine, is there anything that we missed as part of tonight's meeting?
No, sir.
Scott, anything else with that we need to cover?
Sir?
I have the time now, it's 8:19 and we are adjourned.